All right. Good evening. Woo-hoo, nine members today. Good evening. It is Thursday, April 20th, and I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order and ask that we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Body. Dr. Kavanaugh.
Present.
Ms. Lilge.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Present.
Ms. Moore.
Present.
Mr. Richardson.
Present.
Dr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Ms. Willis.
Present.
Laura, Ms. Present.
Thank you. I would like to offer a resounding welcome back for Dr. Kavanaugh from your research trip. We are very happy to have you back with us. Next item is additions to the agenda. I do not have additions to the agenda, but I would ask for the grace from my colleagues if we could move action item, the Christmas order change to prior to the closed session. If you guys would indulge us in doing that so that the executive team doesn't have to wait for closed session to present to us. And then I also want to note for my colleagues that under item nine for closed session, closed session item number three is no longer necessary this evening. So we will just be going into closed session for items one and two. Seeing no objection, we can move right on to public comment on agenda items for which we have none, which means we get to talk about our exciting presentations this evening. First up, we have a presentation from the Everett Robotics Team. And so I believe I am inviting up Emmanuel Cam. Or the whole team. You guys are all, whoever wants to come present, you're welcome to come and sit at this table here.
Just like say thank you for having us here today. My name is Emmanuel Cam from Everett Robotics. This is our team. I'm going to allow them to do the talking themselves.
And I'm just going to ask, when you, do you guys mind grabbing one of those mics out of the stands so when you speak, the folks can hear you? Wow, lots of trophies.
Good evening to our respected Lansing School Board members. We thank you for having us here this great evening. We are here from Everett High School to share our accomplishments and achievements during the season's first robotics competition. First stands for four inspiration and recognition of science and technology. I am Shailema Gaña. I'm a 10th grader and I would like to introduce my fellow team members.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Montserrat Lopez Salgado and I'm in the eighth grade.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Jimena Salgado and I'm in the ninth grade.
Hello, I'm Juan Carlos Lopez Salgado and I am in the ninth grade.
Hi, I'm Bless and I'm in the 12th grade.
Hello, good evening. I'm Ashwini and I'm an foreign exchange student from India and I'm currently in 12th grade from Everett School. Every year, First Robotics creates a new challenge for the year's competition. This year's game was called Charged Up and was presented by Haas. The game consisted of maneuvering cubes and pylons into scoring positions with the final challenge being able to balance our robot and the robots of the other team in your alliance on a platform. The challenge was to build a robot and that could meet these challenges. We created our robot with the help of our coach and our incredible mentors who worked with us through the building of our robot and the competitions. We decided to make our robot small so that it could fit on the platform and end with other robots. We made it open at one end so we could manual cubes and added a paddle to shoot our cubes into scoring positions. This small but incredible robot helped us to be competitive at both of our competitions as a rookie team. Our first competition was at Mason High School. We did very well and were chosen as a backup team for the playoffs. When another team's robot went down, we were called in and made it to the finals as a rookie team. We won the Rookie All-Star Award, Highest Seeded Rookie Award, and 2023 finalist award as a rookie team. Our second competition was at Sallion High School. Our team did a great job and made it into the playoffs as an alliance captain. We again won the highest seeded Rookie Award as well as the Rookie Inspiration Award. It has been such a remarkable and unbelievable year in my lifetime I ever imagined before. Robotics is a great club. We have made new friends, gained a lot of new knowledge and technical skills. And as an exchange student like me and Bless, we both are exchange students from other countries and robotics was being such a great club in our exchange journey. So we would like to thank you again for inviting us today and end up giving you a brief demonstration of our robot. Thank you. Yeah, that was the pedal we use to push and kick our cubes or cones. Those are the game pieces we used. Once again, thank you all for having us here tonight.
Did you press it in?
Team, we're going to have you guys join us in Everett. And then I will, sorry.
Oh, you want, you want to drive the robot up real quick?
A robot?
Might as well, since it's a, you know, robotics. Smile, everyone. Okay. Okay, there we go. You're very welcome.
All right. Thank you guys so much. Dr. Rodriguez, did you have a comment?
Well, yes, exactly what they were waiting for the picture.
Okay.
And also to say the congratulations to the teacher and the mentor. I think that is what the student need mentors that promote them activities, they add know the regular activities. I think that is in favor of this particular person who is joining us with the students tonight. Thank you to him.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I was at the competition in Mason and lo and behold, I finally saw their name as a new rookie group or whatever, you know? And it was, it was nice to see them and see them win. I think they're on the right track. I'm sure there's a lot of work that needs to be done for the next competition and I hope that we support them as much as we can from the administration down to the classroom. So, thank you. It was, it was great being there. And by the way, we invite you board members, if you want to be judges, there is an opportunity. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Lopez, for bringing this to our attention to have our members here, our team here from Everett High School, no less. Thank you very much.
We won't say any more except Everett High School.
All right. All right. So next, our next presentation will be from our K-12 Capital Area Online Group. So I believe I'm inviting up Dr. Hartley.
Madam President, Board of Education, I'm not going to do a lot of presenting because we have two all-stars here that have spent a lot of time on this. I'm going to let Amber and Maureen present, tell you exactly about the Samsung Group Award, but that really stemmed from a STEM after-school program. And I just want to highlight, so we are a Capital Area virtual online school, but the amount of opportunities our students and our families have to come into Pleasant View to interact with each other, to interact with our staff, it really is a special virtual school. And what Maureen is doing with the STEM Club, and I know Amber can point to some other opportunities of in face-to-face, in-person, that's important to point out. So with that, I want to bring Amber and Maureen up. I know there's a video to be played. Are we going to do that before? Probably, okay. So Ron or Jenna, if we could play the video and then they'll go ahead and present. So thank you.
Hello, I'm Mercury Forbes and I'm part of STEM Club at Capital Area K-12 where we're all about making our homes more energy efficient and saving money while we're at it. We're working on this super cool app that tracks energy use in our home so we can see where we're using the most energy and find ways to use less. And get this, we're even learning how to design energy efficient homes using 3D printers. How cool is that? We're also doing research on insulating homes and checking out electric and solar cars to reduce our carbon footprint.
How can kids help their families and communities understand their role in reducing energy waste? What is the most efficient way to design an energy-saving home?
We are going to have Consumers Energy tell us about energy savings through the Customer Home Review Program and give families free thermostats and insulation for water heater and LED light bulbs and water-saving faucets.
Our STEM challenge is to develop creative ways to decrease energy use in homes and to create innovative solutions to increase comfort to families' lives and decrease expenses. Living in Michigan, students raised concerns over how weather conditions can change the energy requirements of their homes. Poorly sealed windows and lack of insulation can lead to wasted energy and wasted resources. Students began evaluating energy conservation in homes, beginning with designing model homes, utilizing everything from basic blocks and doodles to advanced level modeling using computers in an effort to 3D print and test their theories on how to optimize a home for the most efficient energy-saving efforts. Something as simple as putting plastic on windows, sealing doors and wrapping the water heater with proper insulation are ideas and topics students have discussed. Students are learning the capabilities of using Arduino temperature sensors to evaluate their progress and test the efficiency of their designs. With engineering, the students learn the foundation of maximizing design to reduce energy consumption. By using 3D models of various types, students will use math for measuring layouts that can create solutions in their community to help save resources. By making posters and raising awareness that tools like Arduino temperature sensors are available for home use and other resources available from your energy company, not only can students track their efforts, they can see how practical solutions can save their family's money on their energy bill.
We're excited to see how much of a difference we can make and we hope to inspire others to join us in making the world a better place. Thank you for listening.
I'm Amber Lee. I'm the principal of Capital Area K-12 Online. And kind of like what Adam said, our superstar is really Maureen McDermid. She's our nine through 12 science teacher and she had a wonderful idea to participate in the STEM software, the Samsung Software Tomorrow Competition. It's a STEM competition. And so she took initiative upon herself to dive right in. She had a great project idea. We got the STEM Club involved. It was like an immediate action. We had to get a group to, you know, to take on and execute her project idea. And so I'm just going to kind of let her talk about it. I'm very proud of her and very proud of the students. And to be able to give them the opportunity face-to-face, they love it. They just love it. Just because they're learning online does not mean that they don't want to come in to the building, interact and have a good time and learn and build and create. So she did just that. So I'm really proud of her. Go ahead and share what you did.
Well, we formed the STEM Club and we meet every Wednesday. I wrote this proposal because the kids were telling me online, I'm so cold or in the summer, I'm so hot. And I said, you know, how can we fix this? So I talked to the kids. I'm like, how can we fix this? So I wrote the proposal, which is attached to your packet and then the highlights are in the front and the email from Samsung is at the front of that. But I took the kids and I took them and put them together and I said, let's come up with some ideas on how we can build energy-efficient homes. So we just started with some stuff that we had around the building and they started making insulation inside of Lego brick houses. Some of them did cardboard houses. And since we haven't got our actual money yet, we have just been using the materials that we have. But we plan on buying 3D printers and other things like that. So they did some research on how to save energy. They figured out that Consumers Energy could do a home analysis. Our initial award was for $2,500. We beat out Renaissance High School, which I'm very proud of in Detroit because they are a really good school. And we won the state finalist award of $12,000. So our total award is $14,500. That buys a lot of science supplies. I won this at Sexton about five years ago and spending $2,500 was a lot then. Now we have so much money. Amber's going to talk about what we're going to get with that. The kids are super excited. Like she said, they love to get together. Our part of our future project with this is we are going to make an app for families to find resources, how to connect with Consumers Energy and the kids can also share this on social media. Our other future project is to build homes on a 3D printer and find the best ways to insulate it. They are going to learn how to use Tinkercad for designing these 3D homes. They're also, I partnered with Randy Heck from Sexton. He's an engineer. And he's going to teach us how to program Arduino sensors that they can put inside their homes and then put heat lamps on it and check for humidity and temperature, especially in the 3D homes. And then also we are working on currently electric cars and eventually solar cars to figure out how we understand our carbon footprint. And we are partnering with EngineeringTomorrow.org for the app development and the electric cars. So it's pretty exciting. And the proposal's on the back if you want to spend the time reading it, but it was just something that I wrote up and then Amber edited it for me because I'm a science teacher, not an English teacher.
All right. Well, I did, that was the bare minimum that I could do. I've been just here supporting her. As you heard, we've got a lot of plans for the STEM Club. We were able to win a total of $14,500. We do have plans to support the STEM Club with those, with that money. You know, this is brand new for us. So to be able to build a true STEM lab in Pleasant View, that is the goal. And to be able to provide them with, you know, the materials that they need to solve problems that are relevant to them, to their personal lives. So it's always going to start with the driving question and we're just going to let them go from there. I was talking to her about, you know, STEM clubs, STEM Labs slash Makerspace slash Junk Draw Robotics, those types of things to give students the opportunity to create, to imagine, to explore, to build and just to really be, you know, be creative together. And so I think that this is going to be just the start of something wonderful and we're, and we're already like there. She told me that we won state winner and I was like, what? What?
We're still in the running for the $50,000 grant, Sustainability Grant.
Yeah, the next level is national level. I just, I'm really happy that, you know, our online school is capable of doing these things. And we're going to continue. We're just getting started, so. Thank you.
I just love that we're involving students in real-life world problem solving. A friend of mine's nephew invented the pizza tracker that Domino's uses as an intern, as a student. So like you never know what could happen as a result of some of the things that are being proposed by our students. And so that's incredibly exciting and really appreciate your guys' leadership in doing this. Fingers crossed for the $50,000 mid-May. Please keep us posted. Any other comments from my board colleagues? That's good. These are good. These are good. This is a good day with the students today. We appreciate it. Moving on in our agenda, we're going to go to our report from Superintendent, Mr. Shuldiner.
Sure. Well, good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to be here as always. And, you know, just, you know, I hope we do this all the time, right? Having students, having faculty, having, you know, our wonderful people in our community come in to present the great work that's happening. You know, it's a large district, 10,000 kids, 26 schools. A lot of magic happens throughout the district. And, you know, we don't necessarily always talk about it because we're so busy doing the work. And so when we take some time to present, you know, I think that the board, ET, and the community who are watching us at home can really see some of the great things that we're doing. But, you know, if you noticed, both of those, both of the presentations, it really is kind of the phoenix rising. It was the best rookie team, right? We're starting fresh. We're doing new. This is coming out of a school that didn't even exist more than two years ago and now they're the state champions. That's really, really powerful. And I think, and I hope, what that means to everybody is to show you how great Lansing can be when we are focused on doing these things. And I do want to again reiterate something that Amber said and that Adam said is though Capital Area Online is an online school, which we find that some students do really, really well at and parents really want, it also affords the opportunity to be face-to-face. Humans are social creatures. We understand that. There's something powerful about having that friend next to you working in groups. But we also know that a regular brick and mortar school isn't for everybody. And so what I'm really proud of is that I think the Lansing School District has been very thoughtful in how it does all of its different kinds of education. And so anybody certainly listening at home that is interested in online school but that has a screen-to-screen live teacher in front of the child through a screen and has the opportunity to do live face-to-face work, standing and sitting next to each other, should really look into it. I think in some respects, online learning has gotten a bad rap but mainly because it's been done poorly, right? Asynchronous learning isn't always great for folks. It's hard to be self-paced. It works for some but not for others. Here, what we're doing with Lansing is giving kids opportunities to be together socially, to work on projects together, but then also to learn through the computer in places that they can control. You know, there's a lot of students that need things that are quiet or have, you know, not as bright lights like, you know, what we're shining on our faces right now. And so the ability to learn in a really controlled environment is very, very powerful. So I just want to thank all of the people with the robotics team at EV, all of the wonderful staff, certainly Amber and Maureen and Adam, what's working at Capital Area Online. And just know that this is just the beginning. So thank you for that. It's really, really powerful. As always, you know, my cross to bear, as it were. We have 2,872 gas cards, 731 CADA and 159 on the waitlist of Dean. As I think I've said a little bit earlier, a couple of weeks ago, we have been working very, very closely with Dean in terms of a complete refresh and rerouting, which we hope is really going to reduce this waitlist for next year to as close to zero as possible. We also really want to highlight again the relationship with CADA. Not only do we have 731 students on CADA, but, and I've said this to the board and I think I've made it public, is if you look at our attendance rates for high school this year, they're actually higher than they were pre-COVID, which is really powerful. And what we're hearing is that just the ability to have, you know, a CADA card for a student in high school to be able to get on the bus and if they miss one, they get on the second one, has been powerful as well as more attendance at things like after-school programs because students can always find a way home. So I know that the community was looking with questioning, a dutifully questioning eye, and I appreciate that. But we're really, really proud of what's happening with CADA. And then of course, the gas cards. We appreciate that sometimes it's just easier to drive your kid to school or as I've learned with many of our high school students, they drive themselves to school. And, you know, we want to help defray the costs for that. So we certainly look forward to next year where the gas cards will continue to exist. The CADA for the high school kids will consider, continue to exist and hopefully a much more efficient and thoughtful way to do the Dean, the Dean travel. Other than that, I don't want to take too much more time because again, it really should be about the students that we saw, the faculty that we saw and the great narratives. But in this day of celebration of wins, we have a "Did You Know?" about one of our really incredible pedagogues who just won something as well. So hit it. So hit it.
My name is Nicole Minor. I am a math teacher here at Eastern High School. I'm also the math team lead at Eastern High School. And I also work with the math, secondary math steering committee and work with the math teachers at Sexton Everett to kind of talk about the secondary math in all three high schools for the district. I've always wanted to be a teacher. I always tell the story, my mother bought me a memory book when I was a kid. And from kindergarten to seventh grade, it said, the question of what do you want to be when you grow up? I always said teacher. And then from eighth grade to 12th grade, it changed to engineer. And in my 11th grade of high school, I went into an engineering program that my school district had and really enjoyed it. So I decided to pursue engineering when I went to college. So I did that for about 10 years and decided, you know what? Let me give teaching a try. I've always tutored. My first job was a tutor. So I've always been a teacher at heart. It just, I chose a different career path to begin with and then decided that I'd give teaching a try. So went back to school to become a teacher. So I became a teacher officially in 2010. But as I worked on my teaching certificate, I also was a teacher for a GED program that I helped start and run. So I've always been a teacher. It just officially was not until 2010. I'm, I'm very fortunate and I tell my students, I was very fortunate to do both things that I love. I loved being an engineer or I love being an engineer because I still am. But I also have always loved teaching. So I was very fortunate to be able to do both career paths and, you know, do two different things. And that's why I tell my students all the time, you think, you may think you got it, but you don't have to always have it together. You may change, you know, life happens. My favorite part is actually just talking with them, just getting to know them as people, them getting to know me as a person. I mean, I love teaching math. I love my content area. But I, I really try to build a relationship with my kids because when a lot of my students walk through the door, the first thing they say is, I can't do math or I don't like math. And so I try to help build them up so that they realize that, yeah, math may be challenging, but there's things in life that, that's always going to be challenging, but they can do it. I feel like teaching is a calling, like some people are just, you're, it's just what you are here to do. Working with kids have always been something that I've loved. So don't let what you hear and how teachers are treated just sway you away from going into that field. So being named region teacher over a year, it's still, it's still sinking in. I'm excited that I will be able to work with other teachers from the state of Michigan to talk about education in our state and just some of the, I'm excited that I'm a math teacher because, and having that, being able to have that title because our kids struggle with math. And I want to be able to help other people who are making decisions in education see, help them see ways in which we can help our kids be better in math and not be scared of math, starting from kindergarten all the way up. So I'm excited to be able to talk with other people in the state of Michigan about our education system and, and ways that we can help improve it. I just want to continue to be the best version of me that I can be. Continue to improve as a teacher for my kids.
So again, you know, great teaching, great students, great programs. We're really, really proud of, of what's happening in Lansing. And the last thing I want to talk about is our surveys. We appreciate that today we're showing all the, some of the great things that we're doing. But we also know that we can always do better. Last year, we had a trial run on surveys for students and parents and staff. And this year, we have an even better software with better kind of systems and structures in place. And starting very soon, if you are a parent, you'll be getting an email about the surveys. If you are a guardian family, if you are a staff member, you'll be getting some information about the surveys and we'll be doing it during the DPPD days. And if you're a student, we will be having surveys for you in your class. I think it's for sixth to 12th grade. I mean, I'd love to give a survey to a first grader, but it might not come out exactly eligible. So the idea here is that moving forward, giving voice to our community, be it staff, be it family, be it students, allows us to be better. And so I hope that all of you look forward to that. Give us your truth. Give us your unvarnished opinion. If things are great, tell us. If there are things you want to change, tell us because we can only get better if we hear it. And, you know, I've heard since I've been here is there's a tendency to maybe do surveys or do things and then we never share them or we never talk about them. That's not how this works. We are going to be presenting all of this in a very public way. We have special software that will be able to put this online. We'll be able to share it with the school community. The, the whole purpose of this is to get everybody to know where we are, right? Light is the best disinfectant. The best way that we can get better is by sharing how people think about it. But I do want everybody to know that all of the information certainly is anonymous. We're not going to know who, who said what about whom. Then it wouldn't be easy to get the truth out of folks. So please, if you're a family member, be on the lookout of an email. Please make sure that we have all of your correct information. We cannot send you an email if we don't have your email. If you're a student, it will be happening in your class. So come to school, please, although you should come to school anyway. And then, of course, for faculty, you will, and staff, you'll be getting it through DPPD days. And one thing to staff, if you are listening, some of the questions are specific towards, towards teachers. So certainly if you want to answer them, great. Just try to answer the questions that really pertain to you. But I want to be very clear, this isn't just about teachers. Everybody that is an employee of this district, we care deeply about what you think. And so we are going to try our best to get these surveys to everybody, no matter what, regardless of your role. So again, be on the lookout for the surveys and I look forward to sharing them, depending on how quickly we can crunch the data, either by the end of the year or early next year. So with that, I want to turn it back over to President Willis and to thank everybody for their time.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Yes, I have a question about the surveys. Are we just sending them out via email? I'm thinking about barriers, some, I'm old school.
Sure.
Some people like to get something in the mail, so.
Yeah, so, you know, this is something we've been kind of wrestling with quite a lot. The reason why it's going through the email system is that a lot of the information is pre-slugged. So we know who it is in the sense that we know we sent it to you, that, you know, what, what school you're associated with, because the questions are going to be about your school. We don't know your name. Everything's de-identified. But sending it out in the mail was going to be super cumbersome. But what we are going to do, and I can certainly defer to Jessica if she wants to talk about it, is we'll always have opportunities for families to come in. You know, if you want to come in and take your survey at school, we'll figure that out for you. In fact, trying to tie them over the next couple of years to releasing them when we have parent teacher conferences, things like that. So that way we'll always try to make it as, as easy to get. Sending it through the mail is, is complicated and difficult. Not that I wouldn't want to do it, but this, this year, we want to really see, hey, let's, let's try to do it through the, the email. And I agree, I'm more old school than I'd like to believe, I think. But it's also, we do so much via email. We want to make sure that we have your correct information. We want to make sure that people are using the systems because there's so much that we can push out that way and know that they've received it or not. But, you know, we're going to test it this year. We'll see how it is and we'll always iterate and try to do better. But I don't know, Jess, if there's. Oh, yeah, we shot some videos. They're very cute. I don't know.
We just kind of explain how to do it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
No, thanks for that information. I just want to make sure that there's no barriers preventing people from submitting their.
Totally. And, you know, certainly what we would urge to any family member is if internet really is an issue and access is really an issue, our schools are open for you. And your, our schools are open for you regardless, right? You know, these have to be places that you feel comfortable into. And, I mean, I haven't really checked with the staff, but whatever, I guess I'm the superintendent. I can make this call. Certainly they can come to this office. I mean, we have computers, we can bring people in. But, you know, certainly for families, you know, if you, as long as your information is there, we'll be able to get your voice.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Superintendent, but are we going to receive a copy of this survey? And it is already saying, I'm not a faculty, they would like to see it.
Yeah, absolutely. So this is the same survey that we did last year. This is the one that's based on the research that came out of Chicago, the consortium. And it's based on our Framework for Great Schools. But I really appreciate it. I'll make sure that the board gets a copy of the questions. And honestly, we can even send you a link to take it, but we'd probably have to put it in the board section, not as anything else. But, but absolutely. And, and just to remind everybody that these questions have been scientifically validated with over, you know, millions and millions of times. These are the same surveys that are used in Philadelphia and some, I think, in LA and in New York and in Chicago. They're really, really good questions. And then they tie into the work that we've been doing around things like trust and equity and, you know, student performance and things like that. So absolutely, we'll get it to you whenever you want.
President, also, not related to that, but related to Nicole Minor. Can we, and I know that maybe the case with May is the week for the teacher's celebration. Can me and Sam wait to invite her here and honor her? Give her a certificate or something because it's an honor for Lansing School District to have a person like her. And I think we should celebrate it for her here in the world.
Absolutely. I just, I think we should absolutely do that. I just don't want to jinx her running for the state one. So we didn't want to bring her in until we knew where she was going to end up. But yes, absolutely. Once the whole system is done, and I guess there, I don't know if it's a vote or how it works, once they announce with the teachers of the, of the year, I think, Dr. Rodriguez, that is a beautiful idea that she should come here and, and receive our accolades. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for board members? Ms. Richardson.
For our clarity, do we see the results of those surveys?
Yeah, not only do you, but the public does. Yeah. And that's something, and thank you for bringing that up. In order for us to move this district, we need to be transparent about how we do. So thank you.
Thank you. Great questions, everyone. That brings us to our routine matters and old business. So first up this evening, we have our finance committee report from Ms. Wilge.
Thanks, Madam President. So for the treasurer's report for March of 2023, the detailed treasurer's report for the period of March 1st, 2023 through March 31st, 2023 is attached to this evening's agenda. And here are some highlights. The beginning cash and investment balance was $39,49,562. Receipts totaled $18,744,748, while disbursements equaled a negative $24,571,14. Net inter fund transfers totaled negative $136,984 in interest from fund investments to the student and bond funds, as well as journal entries to remove the due to, due froms in all funds. The monthly transfer to the general fund for the 2022 and 2019 bond expenses was $145,809. The ending general fund cash and investment balance on March 31st, 2023 was $33,232,121. The general fund's cash and investment balance is $2,319,331 greater as compared to the same time last year. And now I'd like to go over the donations that were received during March. They totaled $1,637. The bulk of that came from the Association of General Contractors of Michigan. And they made a $1,500 donation to Skilled Trades. Then we had a $100 donation to Lansing School District from the Blackbaud and Jackson National Life. And then we also had a $10 donations from Blackbaud and EcoLab. Those go to the general fund. And then from the Carl McLean Memorial Fund, we got $2.47. And also there was a Blackbaud and TIAA donation to LSD, another one that goes to general fund for $25. And again, the donations from last month totaled $1,637.47. Madam President, this concludes the March 2023 treasurer's report.
Thank you. Any questions from colleagues? Just a reminder that the receipt and approval of the treasurer's report is on this evening's consent agenda. That takes us to our next action item, which is... Oh, no, not action item, committee report, Mr. Lopez from the Facilities Committee.
Put your seatbelts on. Okay, we, the Facilities Committee met on April 17th. President Willis and Trustee Kirk Richardson were there, along with me. We, we received reports and information on, on several items. We have quite a number of requests for tonight. But the first item we, we talked about was a bond update. And that had to with Monhope. First was Monhope, where they're continuing to test for asbestos before they go into the, to the demolition of it, of the building. But it, it, it all seems to be on, online. It will not impact the, the timeline for, for demolition unless they find something unexpected, you know? But that's just a caution. We reviewed some of the air conditioning projects, update on those, mainly on Lyons, Edwood. Also, we, we received some information, or were presented with renderings for Willow School. Those are still in, in the making and at certain point in time, they'll come to the full board. But we reviewed three of them. Actually, if any of the members wants to chime in, you know, feel free. President Willis or Trustee Richardson, if you have anything, just chime in. After that, we went to bid recommendations, which we have in our agenda for tonight. The overall cost for 1778 recommendation This, this is for video surveillance and this is really for the video surveillance for Sexton and, and Eastern Fields. The, each of these numbers that you see in your agenda has a number of sub, subcategories. Okay? In the SO 1779, we have, we reviewed the flooring for... This was for general flooring for, let's see, that was, that was for flooring. And in that, you have also general trades. And you had the painting. And you had plumbing. All of that in the schools that, that we're preparing for, for next year. I think it was, that's in the first one, Element Renovation Scopes. Then you can look at it in your packet. But each, each of this request has, you know, several items attached to that. The 1780 was for general trades. And this, this one was, the first one was, was for Capital Area K-12 online building. And we had, under that, we had earthworks. And it's, a lot of work's going to be happening this summer. And it's a lot of work's going to be happening this summer. If you look in your paperwork, you will see that there's a lot of different costs for different items that pertain to this overall subject. Concrete work, asphalt, and that's part of this request. In the 1781 at Everett High School, re-roofed. And 1782, we have North Elementary interior renovations. And this are all recommendations for that school. And under that, you will see that it has flooring, painting again, plumbing, HVAC. And again, these are all, this is all work that is needed to get the building ready for students next year. The following is 1783. Riddle Elementary, extra renovation package. You know, we have general trades. You have flooring, again, painting, specialties. Again, HVAC. Some of these things, you know, kind of repeat themselves for each of the buildings. But they're all being done again to get our schools ready for next year. And there's certainly going to be a lot of work going on this summer. So if you go to any of these schools, especially the ones that are going to be, you know, remodeled or upgraded to receive students from other schools, you will see a lot of that happening also in the high schools at Saxon and Everett. So chime in, Mr. Trustee Richardson.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Just two things I'd point out to our colleagues. For everything that was presented to us this evening, the funding source is sinking fund, except for the video surveillance expansion that is a state school aid grant that we're able to use. The Everett re-roofing area, the section of the school that is being, having the roof work done is over the new tech section, so if you can just visualize where that is. And if you spazzed out about all of the things that we're having to do that weren't included with the bond, like I did, it was explained to me that there was only so much money we could do with the bond, which is why we are blessed to have the sinking fund, which allows us to continue to do these improvements. The numbers are big, but they, we've had deferred maintenance in this district for a while that we've needed to address, and we're thankful we have the sinking fund that allows us to do that. So just add that.
True. Yes, thank you for pointing that out. Yes, this is all sinking fund primarily. Go ahead, sir.
And that's what I was going to add. One of the things I think, as we were sitting in the meetings this week for both Finance and Facilities, that made me very proud is we have this, you even see it tonight. We have this reality of Teacher of the Year, we have STEM, we have an online school that's winning statewide awards. We have the robotic club, and all of that stuff is the reality. But as a district, we're battling perception stuff, and by nature, perception, it has to do with eyesight and edification and some of these things. And so you used our word of the week, President Willis, which is deferred maintenance. And so as we go through these things, as a guy whose nature is to not spend money, you really, in those meetings, see that we've got a lot of work to do on that perception piece. That's the physical manifestation of buildings and the edification of these buildings to attract these students back to the district, the 6,000 that wake up and go somewhere else every morning. We have to have attractive buildings. And so I just think it's kudos to the ET, kudos to Superintendent, kudos to this facility for the Facilities Committee to taking action on what was a long, long, long list of neglected buildings. And that's our reality right now. But their also reality is we have great things going on, but this edification process is going to be a part of drawing people back here. And so deferred maintenance was the word of the week and what we were talking about. And it looks like, and correct me if I'm wrong, you two, I think we've touched all but just a handful of buildings at this point, like maybe two or three, which is fantastic, and everyone needs to know that.
Sure. And again, this is mainly on the buildings that we're, you know, preparing for having students next year. And we're going to close, for example, other schools, and we need to house them somewhere. So North, Riddle are getting a lot of that work done. One thing that I didn't mention on the first one, Logistics gave us a report on Gardner, recommendations for roofing. Well, it's a lot of money, okay? At the same time, it's not all that needs to be done. There's another $3 million left of work to be done at a later date with additional monies that we may get through other sources. So as we're moving, like Trustee Richardson said, you know, as we're moving, there's still a lot to be done. So, and one other point that the money that we're looking at tonight, it's under about a half a mil, under the expected, you know, the projection that the district did or our staff did for this project. So even though it's a lot of money, it's still projected to be less. And with that, we're going to do other things that need to be done. We have some other items here, the moving. 1784 was the moving service. So that's the contractor to move all this stuff from one school to the other and help the teachers, you know, get their act together when they're going to move to the new buildings and all the moving that needs to be done. You're going to go through the other one, right? You're going to go through the Clark one? The one that I just showed you? Yeah, okay. So this is all I have for tonight. The other one, we did not review it at the committee meeting, but it also, it's important. Madam Chair, unless there's any other questions, that's my report.
I got one more addition.
Okay.
Sure thing, Mr.
You mentioned, thank you for mentioning the Gardner thing. There's also a cool lesson learned in this, which is it's expensive, but the district, a long, long time ago, made a poor decision with how some of the schools were built. And so as we're in this construction phase right now, there's some lesson learns that'll apply to what we're doing now that we won't make those mistakes again. Specifically, you might hear 3 million is what's left over at Gardner. It's because of the way the lights and heats were integrated, bad design, that we will not replicate any further. So Superintendent talks about being a good steward of money a lot of times. That's an expensive fix that's still remaining at Gardner. But there is a life lesson there, which is, as we're building right now, to not make boneheaded mistakes like that anymore.
Like learning about asbestos, right? Like that was the thing of the day. Turns out, it's causing a lot of problems.
And that's why I've mentioned that at Monhope, they're still doing asbestos monitoring in order to then get to the demolition of that. But it's on schedule though. Thank you.
All right.
Oh.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you very much for your presentation. I think they're just going 1779, 1780, 81 helps. I'm also knowing where the money is coming from. But I am interested in the video surveillance. How the videos are working in the buildings, where are they located, how? I visited the school, something else, my patient. I know so many videos in American schools. And I think that we should find out how these videos are working, are in the future, what is the function really that we want them to use, and how we are going to improve the security of our students and staff. And I don't know if I had to go to every school and find out or we had to wait until something happened and we don't have the answer.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, being able to have cameras at our schools heightens our ability to keep places safe and secure. We're happy to provide to the board, you know, that we have a series of cameras throughout the district. We probably don't want to share exactly where all of those are so that people don't come at night and take things. But, you know, rest assured that this district has, in fact, invested in quite a bit of security cameras throughout the district. And what's nice is the good people, a couple blocks down the street, have been creating some very specific pots of money to be able to get things like extra security cameras. Now, of course, they're only as good as, you know, those of us that are watching it. But we can certainly show the board how they're used and how we use it to keep all of our folks safe, both our staff and our students. But we do have hundreds of cameras throughout the district that are used on a daily basis to make sure that everything is going on smoothly. But happy to have another conversation with the board about specific schools and locations and things like that.
Mr. Lopez, Chair?
Yeah, on that item, you know, speaking about new buildings and lessons learned. I know that some of our old buildings, even if we had cameras, we couldn't see certain areas because it was, you know, the way the building was built, it's hard to catch. So as we move along, you know, that's another thing that we need to do.
All right. Thank you. Just a reminder to my colleagues that we do have all of those bid recommendations that Mr. Lopez reviewed on our consent agenda. With one of them pulled out, we're going to approve separately. With that being said, that brings us to the approval of our consent agenda for this evening, which includes the receipts and approval of the March Treasurer's Report and the consideration of approval for bids 1778, 1779, 1780, 1781, 1782, and 1783. May I have a motion? Thank you. It's been moved by Ms. Williams, supported by Ms. Moore. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as approved, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 9-0. That brings us on to the recommendation to consider the approval of the 1784 bid for moving services. May I have a motion? Ms. Lilgi?
I move that the Board of Education approve the SO 1784 for moving services, bid recommendation.
It's been moved by Ms. Lilgi, supported by Ms. Williams. Since this one is not on the consent agenda, are there any comments or questions from board members?
Just that I recuse myself from this one.
Sure thing. With no questions, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, recusal. So the motion passes 8-0-1. That brings us, oh, we are now going to move to our action items. So I'm going to invite Ms. Tokar to share with us the need to consider this change order for Lyons Elementary School.
Good evening. There it goes. Maybe? Is it on? Okay, good. Hi, I'm going to sit over here if you guys don't mind. So this is a late addition to the agenda, so I just wanted to apologize for that. But this just came through, and we wanted to make sure that we continued with the work, and there wasn't a delay in the work since we don't have another board meeting for two weeks. So as some of you may know, if we have any requests for change orders that are above $100,000, that needs to come to the Board of Education for approval. This change order is for AC work that we're doing at Lyons Elementary. Due to the current mechanical systems that are on the roof and adding the new AC, we are needing to make some changes to some of the mechanical systems. And when those prices came in, this came in a little bit higher than what we're, it's what we're experiencing right now just due to the market. And so that's what this is. I do want to point out, though, that the food services money is going to be helping to pay for this. So this won't actually be affecting the 2022 bond or the sinking fund line items for purchase. This will actually be food service funds that will be paying for this. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Most of our bid recommendations, we have a contingency. So this means that the change is, it's more than even the contingency.
Correct.
Do we, is it just parts, material, and labor that pushed it over, or we actually needed to adjust our scope?
It's parts, material, and labor. So it was just 77,000 just for the new mechanical part alone. So that's the majority of the cost. And there's some changes that we need to make to the walls and the ceilings, that type of thing, to add in the new piece.
And we just didn't know going into this. We couldn't, okay. Any other questions from board members?
Who finds that? Is that Chrisman that comes to you and says, hey, there's an error here, and then when did that occur?
Yep. So that happens both with the architect and engineering firm when we're going through the process, as well as Chrisman. So as the designs are getting put together, that's when they're looking at, okay, what is it going to take to put in the new AC system? What's it going to take to add it to the system we currently have? What retrofits, those types of things, do we need to do? So we go in with many assumptions based on what we know about the systems from design. But when you actually get into it and start doing DD and CD, then they find out like the intricacies of the actual system and what issues might come up. This one, an issue came up. We needed to make some changes to the systems. If we're putting in vertical ventilators or horizontal unit ventilators, what does that mean? What changes do we need to make to get AC into the school? So some things just pop up kind of on the end of going through the process, and this was one of those items.
And so then in the theme of getting out of these negative feedback loops, we're taking this information and applying it to all the other HVAC stuff we've sat in.
100%. One of the things that we do or we have done in the past with our schools is when we put in a system, some of our schools have very similar systems. So we know with what we've learned now from Lyons, then we know this is going to apply to a couple of other schools when we go to put in air conditioning. And so we're, now we know this upfront that we're probably going to run into this issue again. So then we know that ahead of time.
All right. So that's the information for us to consider for action. May I have a motion? Dr. Body? So there is a recommendation at the Board of Education accepted and approved the Chrisman change order for Lyons Elementary School as presented by Dr. Body, supported by Ms. Moore. Are there any other questions, comments from board members?
Just a last question. So obviously, we do HVAC regularly in our committee. Would we be able to get an update on, hey, I know these ones are going to go sideways then based on this information?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez?
Yes. So as we consider the recommendations, they come to the Facilities Committee. You know, the money's going to be larger, obviously, to some degree. But on the other hand, this does not impact any of our things that we did today, okay? So this is a different purchase category and number, so.
And to that point...
Just FYI.
The things that we, that was a good question, Mr. Richardson. The things that we're going through today have gone through the lens to help us not have to do this again for those current bits. So that was a really good question. Any other questions or comments? All right, seen on all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Great. Motion passes 9-0. That takes us back to the regular order of our meeting this evening, which brings us to our closed session. We do have two recommended sections of the Open Meetings Act that allow us to go into closed session. And I just realized, can we adopt that all as one motion, or do we need to go at once, come out, and then go back in? That is wonderful. So may I have a motion for us to go into closed session? And I do need for the record for whoever makes the motion to read what's written on the agenda. Dr. Kavanaugh?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the following purposes. Number one, for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement if either negotiating party requests a closed hearing. And number two, to consider the purchase or lease of real property up to the time an option to purchase or lease that real property is obtained.
Thank you. It's been moved by Dr. Kavanaugh, supported by Dr. Body. I do need a two-thirds vote on this. Any questions or comments? I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Dr. Body? Dr. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Ms. Lilgi? Mr. Lopez? Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez? Ms. Williams? Ms. Willis?
Yes. Motion passes 9-0, which means that at 7:09, the board is going into closed session.
I just want to make sure everybody knew.
Okay, we are back in open session, which brings us to... Okay, we are back in open session, um, which brings us to our next item on our agenda, which is report from Secretary of Announcements. Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Nurturing Parenting Program via Zoom through Community Learning Center, April 24. See district calendar for registration information. Parent Community Advisory Council Pickup Meeting, April 26, 2023, in the Administration Building. See district website for more information. May 1st, 2023 to May 5th, 2023 is National Teacher Appreciation Week. Next board meetings. May 4, regular board meeting at the Administration Building. May 11, informational study session meeting to be held in Sheraton Elementary, 6:00 PM. On May 18, regular board meeting in the Administration Building. Also, April 24, next Monday will be Policy Committee Meeting. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you for that update. Next on the agenda, we have, um, public comment on non-agenda items. I do have a couple of registered speakers, um, just for our public comments. Um, guests this evening, you have three minutes to address the board, um, at this podium right here. Um, so the first, um, guest, and we may have lost some, um, is Brittany Gubow. Gubow, great. Brittany, thanks, Gubow. Um, please join us at the podium here and, uh, clock will start whenever you're ready.
Oh, do I have to give you the thumbs up when I'm ready? Can I set this up really fast? How you guys doing? Good. Can you tell it's my first time? I'm just gonna have this go so you can see something while I'm talking, visualize what I'm talking about. Um, that'd be awesome. Okay. Can you see something? A color? Okay. Okay, I'm ready. Hi, everyone. My name is Brittany Gilbo. Um, I am the Everett Cheer Coach at Everett High School. Um, I'm 26 years old, um, and I have been coaching at Everett High School for eight years. Um, so overall, my proposal is to somehow find a way for sideline coaching, uh, for sideline cheerleading coaches to receive a stipend, um, funding or a way for us to get paid because we do spend a lot of time with our athletes, um, for sideline. We are year round. Um, so literally this little month here of April, we, this, this is the only time we have to ourselves. So, um, I just wanted to iterate that we do spend a lot of time with our athletes and as right now I am a volunteer, so I'm not a genuine coach. Um, and I understand that sideline is not under MSHA A for athletics and it's kind of a difficult subject trying to figure out which, uh, club or department that would go into. But we do dedicate a lot of time with our athletes. Um, I can say that I have dedicated over about an estimate of 4,000 hours. Um, and that sounds really crazy, but when you're with the kids two times out of the week, um, three hour practices every week, we don't really cancel. We're here over the summer. Um, that doesn't include camps. Um, we also add our own money into our program as well. Um, because a lot of times our kids are paying for camp also during the summer. Camp is about 300, it's for actually $400 this year per athlete. Um, we also don't receive busing, but I do want to acknowledge that this year, um, has been really great with the people that we have been working with, with our principal, um, our AD and everyone else. So that is the great part, but we do hope to get better funding because we are helping these kids develop. Um, cheerleading is definitely a passion project for myself and I deeply care for the kids that I do work with. So I just want to make sure that we accommodate the people that have been working in the district for a really long time. Um, because I feel like we should feel valued with what we're doing, um, and appreciated for that because it is really touching. A lot of the kids need support. Um, sorry. A lot of the kids do need support in their homes. I've dealt with a lot of children that have been through depression and eating disorders and you name it. So I'm always there for the kids and I just hope that, um, with the support that I've received this year from the actual school, I hope that I could receive the same support from you guys so we could get more funding for the sideline coaches because I know that all the other districts as well, that I know their coaches are doing the same thing for free as well. So that's all.
Thank you.
Did you see some pictures? Did they go?
Yeah, we saw it. Thank you. All right. Uh, next I would like to invite Darlene Gilbo, Gubow, sorry, to the podium.
Still close.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Darlene Gilbo. I have been coaching at Everett High School for about 12 years, well, and but as a volunteer. Um, I started when my daughter was like in the ninth grade. So you know, I'm one of those parents that moves along with your, with your kids when it comes down to coaching. And so I have been at Everett ever since, simply because I, um, believe in the cheer program. Um, it started to where, um, I have, like I said, I have been there for 12 years. I have been through at least nine assistant coaches. I have been through at least five, maybe six ADs. And, um, probably I would say about, about four principals as well. So I have been in the program a long time, so I have seen change, um, good changes and some changes that, um, where we probably needed some help but wasn't able to receive that help. But I must say, as of this year is a, has been a great year. They was able to give us like busing for camp, which was wonderful. The first time we have ever received that. That was like wonderful. But, um, Ben, that I have been there for so long and I have been through that program. I want to see that program grow to where it needs to be. Um, we're in the process, this is our first year of having JV cheerleaders. We would like to build that program to where we can have freshmen, JV and varsity because it's been with the funding, we was only able just to do varsity. So, um, we're trying to build it a little bit more, but yet and still, um, it's a lot of time that we put in as coaches. Um, it's a lot of time of dedication as for us taking the kids to and from home, from practice and just being there for them. We want to see those kids grow and strive because cheerleading, a lot of people know it though, you can receive scholarships, you can receive grants, you can receive a lot of things through cheerleading. Um, it's an opportunity also for those kids that, um, can't do competitive cheer, that don't tumble or don't do anything like that. It gives them another outlet and another place to go in order to be part and be a representative of the school itself. So, um, cheerleading is very important, even though we're sidelined, is very important. So, um, but we like to still be there for the kids, but yet and still be account, be, have someone, you know, to be there for us as well as coaches since we are volunteering our services and our time and our dedication for those students. Uh, we love them. Like I say, we just want to make sure that program grows and builds. But at the end of the day, we still need to be accountable for the coaches and have, be able to, um, see if we can get some type of stipend or something because out of the years that I have been there, I don't think I have ever received like a, a certificate, you know, just to say thank you, you know? But other than that, I appreciate it and sorry if I went over on my time. But thank you for listening and being there and giving us the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. And I'm assuming the, um, the other young ladies, Mika, Michaela and Myra that were here to speak, um, we miss them, but let them know that we did acknowledge that they asked to speak. So thank you. Next on our agenda is comment from board members. Ms. Lilge.
Actually, um, I have comments from Dr. Body who had to go. He had to drive to Detroit tonight and it's the last day of Ramadan. So he, he regrets that he couldn't be here for public comment. Uh, but he did want me to pass along a couple of things. There is the Mayor's Ramadan Unity Dinner on Monday, May 1st from 5:30 to 8:00 PM at the Lansing Center. And like last year, Farhan has free tickets to give board members and ET members who want to go and all proceeds will go towards the Lansing Food Bank. Also, Dr. Body is giving the commencement speech at MSU at Breslin Center for the Lyman Briggs College on Sunday, May 7th at noon. Everyone's invited. Thank you, Dr. Body.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? Mr. Lopez.
Thank you. Just very quickly, this is, um, another thing that happened at the NSBA conference that I went to. The speaker at the Hispanic Breakfast was Consuelo Castillo Kipuch, who's a retired officer. And, um, uh, all her speech was, was great, but then she left this for school board members, which was her theme. This advice to the board members. And the acronym is Nopalitos, which is cactus in Spanish, right? You know it. You know it. Oh, we know it over here. I don't know about you guys over there.
They know now.
They know now.
It's, it's very simple, but I think it's something that, that keeps it in our mind, right? So the nine or 10 items says, uh, never give up. Our kids are priceless. As board members, as, as board members. Uh, oh, look for the unforeseen opportunity. Plan and prepare using creativity and innovation. Actions create legacies. Lead with courage. Innovation and inspiration will get you there. Teamwork is about collective. Observe with a different lens. And stay humble and serve with a big heart. So her whole speech evolved around this, these themes. And I thought that I would bring this and just give it here. Maybe the district can make copies and keep it somewhere else. But, uh, it's something that was, um, very impacting as she was talking about it. And I just wanted to give you that feedback as well. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. I attended this afternoon a celebration for the Latin, Lansing Latino Health Alliance, 20 years of assistance here. And they promote good health in our community. And the speaker was the former president or director of the Ingham County Health Department. And he, and she was talking about equity of health. I think it was a good topic. And, um, explained very well about health. But also I think we should see or do something because yesterday was the superintendent's birthday. We want to celebrate that, congratulate him and stay many years more.
I'd sing if you guys wanted me to. Feliz Navidad, I'll say that. Yeah. Uh, Ms. Williams.
Again, happy birthday to the intended holiday. We're still celebrating today. You guys, don't forget to go get the cake out of the room. Some of us can go in there. But the KU Willis Trail Blazing Scholarship, $500 is available now through May 6th online. For more information, contact scholarships@divineconnection.viz or call Kathy Morgan at 517-793-4846. And I will get this to you so that we can put it on the Facebook page as well. We want to make sure that people know that that's out there for them.
Scholarships for graduating seniors? Okay, great. Any other comments from board members? All right. Seeing none. The only thing that stands between us and Ben's birthday cake is the motion to adjourn. It's been moved by Ms. Williams, supported by Ms. Moore that we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes eight zero and at 8:38, we are adjourned.